Who's Shaver?
At this time, I will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, where nations under God, and individual with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone here this evening. In terms of the agenda, we do have one item to add to the agenda, and that would be the, consider the appointment of a member to the Municipal Utilities Commission that was inadvertently left off the agenda. We'll add that as agenda item number 22. Is there any other items to add or delete to the agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. Welcome, Councilmember Shaver.
Thank you.
Agenda item number one, then, consider the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on April 23rd. Council does have those minutes. Are there any corrections to note at this time?
Move to approve, second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We will move to a vote. We will close the voting. And the motion does pass.
Bob, did you note I'm right side up today?
Yes.
I've been working on that.
Very happy you found your way, Craig.
Yeah.
We'll move then to the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda this evening. And they include, consider the authorization to declare vehicles as surplus property. Consider the approval for a temporary liquor license for the Knights of Columbus. Consider the approval to allow the American Legion to conduct bingo at the Red Baron Arena on June 6th. The preliminary Platte Peachy subdivision, that, this is the introduction of the preliminary Platte. The preliminary Platte of the Lockwood Second Edition, again, this is introduction of the preliminary Platte. The vacation of utility easement in the proposed Lockwood Second Edition. We will receive the petition for the vacation and a call for the public hearing. Also on the consent agenda, set the public hearing date for the MS4 permit program summary for the 2023 activities. Consider the approval of declaring Sounds of Summer as a community festival. Also with Sounds of Summer, call for a public hearing for the private use of public streets in the parking lot for Sounds of Summer. Dates would be August 22nd to 25th. Consider the approval executing a quitclaim deed and the execution of the related documents. Consider the resolution approving the low maintenance of Dean Lane Park and Michael Park. And then finally, consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. So is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for a separate discussion?
Move to approve, second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig to approve all of the items on the consent agenda. Any discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion does pass. Did you abstain, or?
No, I, yes, but obviously, I vote, I vote.
So we'll record. Okay, there he is.
I just, we're slow, slow on this.
You were a long ways away from the clerk. It took a while to get there.
It still passes unanimously. So we'll move then to agenda item 14. This is Thursday, Sun 3rd. Consider the request for the Marshall Convention and Visitors Bureau for July 18th and November 19th. Where are we at here? Oh, yeah, for 7:18, 8:15, and 9:19.
There you go.
With us tonight is Cassie Weis, the Director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. First off, welcome, Cassie. We're happy you're here, and you can present the request.
Yeah, thank you, council. Thank you, mayor. So we've been working with both the Marshall Chamber and the Farmers Market Association on putting this event together. So our goal right now, we have one food truck, we have live music, and we are going to try to get 10 vendors down on Third Street, shut the street down, shut the alley down, and do it three times throughout the year. All three kind of fall within other events that are going on. So the first one is crazy days. So the street will already be shut down for the entire day. August 15th is the line, start of the Lion County Fair, and then September 19th is Prairie Jam. So we have talked with the Marshall Downtown Business Association, as well as emailed all of the businesses on Third Street, and all of them are in support. No one has had any concerns. So we do have a little, I don't know if you guys want to see, but just our little like map of how we were going to kind of set it up. We're gonna, excited to see how Juneteenth does it and what the space looks like with food trucks and a stage and all that stuff down there. So as we get, once we get past Juneteenth, this might change a little bit, but yeah. Any questions?
Any questions? See, do you have anything to add from CBB? Any questions?
I just have a comment. I'm really glad to see that the Third Street Plaza is going to be tested now. Hopefully that it continues to move this way. Thank you for doing this.
Of course. Thank you.
Any other input, questions, or comments? If not, is there a motion to approve the request?
I move approval.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda item number 15, consider the adoption of the ordinance that would amend Section 86 to 97. This is the, related to the one family resident district presenting will be Ilya Gutman. And then also, city attorney Pam Whitmore is, is available online.
Thank you, Mayor Council. So this change is related to two things. It relates to the new comprehensive plan that was adopted last year. It is also related to several changes in the ordinance and new rental ordinance adoption. So basically, staff went through the entire ordinance and tried to see what can, it has to do in order to make it in line with the new comprehensive plan and what changes will have to be made to accommodate or remove repetition because of the zoning, sorry, rental ordinance. So it's kind of, there's not significant, not many significant changes. One of them is that we removed the regulation which prohibited having more than three unrelated adults in one rental unit. It doesn't remove all regulations because housing ordinance still limits number of people living in the unit by number of people living in the bedroom. So there cannot be more than two people living in the bedroom. So there is still regulations, but there's no requirements how they should relate to each other. Other than that, it's kind of relatively self-explanatory. I can ask, answer any questions that you have. But as I said, it's all based on the new comprehensive plan and a few other changes in the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you, Ilya. Any input from Legislative Ordinance Committee?
Again, this is an ordinance we looked at and it lessons regulations, Marshall, which makes it more apt for our business owners to be successful.
City Attorney Whitmore, anything you want to add?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Questions? If not, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by C, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close, and close the voting. And the motion does pass. So move to agenda item number 16, also consider the adoption of the ordinance. This one would repeal the section on bed and breakfast.
Thank you. This one relates directly to new rental ordinance because rental ordinance now requires the registration for all bed and breakfasts. So staff thought that there is no reason to kind of double, ask people who have bed and breakfast register for the, with the city to also go through process of interim use permits. So that's why the whole ordinance is repealed. And whatever requirements are here are necessary, they are, they have been moved to the rental ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on this one? If not, is there a motion?
So move.
Motion by Craig, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to agenda item number 17. The, also consider the adoption of the ordinance amending Section 86 to 107, general industrial district. Once again, Ilya.
Thank you. So this one is not about comprehensive plan. This, there is only one change here, and that relates to the current situation in the city where some areas have agricultural use right now. And if it's agricultural zoning district, it's allowed. If it's not, strictly speaking, it's not a permitted or conditional use. So theoretically, whoever does this thing is doing it in violation of the ordinance. So this ordinance change will allow to bring the thing under the umbrella of the ordinance. So it will be permitted as a conditional use in industrial districts, and staff doesn't see any problem with that. I want to make a comment that that use sometimes is kind of, you can see it in business district, but there it will be regulated differently. There it will be regulated under interim use permits. So it was, we don't want it in those districts to be forever. Conditional use stays forever, interim use is limited by in time. So in industrial district, if someone wants to use agricultural, for agricultural purpose, that's fine. It's not the best use, but eventually they will decide that it, there are better uses. In business district, we want to have more control on that thing and within time.
Thank you. Input from the council or questions? Again, the thanks to you, Ilya, and the Legislative Ordinance for some of the, I'll call them housekeeping or cleaning up or just keeping our ordinance current. That certainly was what these are this evening. So with that, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. And then agenda item number 18, consider the adoption of the ordinance amending the Section 86 to 162, the yard modification. Ilya?
So this thing came from the, really from the variance request. So there was a request to have a garage built in this circle. And currently, the ordinance requires 25-foot front yard everywhere. During the conversation, there was questions why it's not permitted. And then after the meeting, there was also conversation about maybe something maybe changed. And we looked at that, and we, staff thought that there is really no harm in doing this thing because this change applies only to circle and not only this whole circle, only to curved area of a circle. So in general, the frontage is very narrow there where there is also only curved part of the circle that is frontage of the building. So it won't affect those people. And mostly, it will affect only people who are at the corner lot of the circle and the street. So it will allow them to have something closer to the circle, that small area. Again, we don't see harm in that thing because it will be mostly just the corner of the building. So it shouldn't affect the negatively, negatively affect the area. So it went through the LNO and Planning Commission, and the idea was, again, it relaxes the requirements and allow people to do something which doesn't harm neighbors.
Okay, thank you. Since this was discussed by two different groups, any input from the Legislative Ordinance Committee and/or the Planning Commission?
At LNO, when we looked at this, as Ilya said, this actually came of all because of somebody planning for variance. And it makes a lot of sense to allow people to use more of their property, especially in these cul-de-sacs because you get very limited. And I think it's a good, a good change for our citizens and folks who live in circles. I think Amanda, you live on a circle.
I don't.
Never mind that. But it's.
I live really near a few circles.
Everybody live with squares.
Example of a citizen, or one of our citizens bringing this forward and us taking a look at it. Unfortunately, it doesn't help him, but it helps future people.
Any other input?
I would, I'm trying to think back to that Planning Commission meeting when it was a while ago. And it was just, I mean, conversation and understanding the why, but it wasn't, it didn't fit with the variance at that point. But, so this will be a good modification, I think, for those people.
Any other questions from the council?
I'll make a motion to be approved.
I'd second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. And then we'll move to agenda number 19, consider the adoption of the ordinance amending Section 66-55 procedures and Section 66-53 required. Once again, for the last time tonight, Ilya.
For the last time today. This is not zoning ordinance. This is actually planning procedures, and the changes are minimal. Basically, it relates to Planning Commission. We changed recently that the public hearing is taking place at the Planning Commission, but sometimes Planning Commission doesn't have quorum. So in order to speed up the process, we changed the ordinance so that if there is no quorum at the Planning Commission, it will go directly to the council for the same public hearing. City Attorney looked at that and she made some changes, so that's reflected here. And the, less Section 53 is just, basically, we are getting rid of requirements for hard copies. I mean, no one does hard copies anymore. It's all digital. So this makes it easier.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
I move approval.
Motion by Amanda, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Thank you, Ilya. We'll move then to agenda item number 20, QuickTrip 1273 will consider the approval of the preliminary Platte as well as consider the resolution adopting the final Platte. We'll start with Jason Anderson, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Thank you, mayor. Included in the packet, you should have the preliminary Platte as well as the final Platte and also the corresponding engineer's checklist to go along with those. QuickTrip has purchased and combined numerous parcels at the corner of 68 and 59, the former Kettours Gas Station, with the intent of building a new gas station and convenience store at this location. Purpose of the Platte is to combine all the parcels and clean up all the issues here. No issues with the Platte from a staff perspective. Bolden Bank, as well as QuickTrip, we're, we're good to work with and squaring some things up. We would recommend to, to approve the preliminary and the final Platte. I'll point out that Dean George of QuickTrip is here tonight as well, if you have any questions for him.
And Dean, do you have any comments you want to make?
No, just thank you for having us again.
Very good. Okay, questions the council has?
Just a comment again, and we appreciate the investment that QuickTrip is making in the community and bringing in a significant presence. We hope it's been so far very successful. It looks like it has.
It has. We're happy to be here.
Good, good.
Any other important questions? If not, we'll take these one at a time. First, consider the approval of the preliminary Platte.
Move to approve, second.
Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion, did yours not get there?
I didn't hit save in time.
What, you want to vote yes or no?
It was a yes.
Okay, so the motion passed. There we go. Passes unanimously. And we'll now consider the resolution that would adopt the final Platte.
Move approval, second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Once again, you know, we appreciate the investment QuickTrip is making in the community. As we got a few minutes, you want to tell us when construction is going to start and when the ribbon cutting is going to happen?
Construction slated to start early to mid-June, I think, I saw June 10th on the calendar. And then the ribbon cutting should occur, construction will be done probably three and a half months after, about 110-day bill. And ribbon cutting, I think, is going to be sometime in the fall, but we'll make sure everyone knows.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
We'll move then to agenda item number 21, Project PK-013. This is the RFB and the Trail Extension Project. Will consider the resolution authorizing the execution of the MINDOT Cooperative Construction Agreement for this project. Jason?
Thank you, mayor. So you may remember the city marshal was awarded an AT grant, Active Transportation Grant, for a little over $360,000 about a year ago. And staff and our engineering team have been working on putting together plans and permitting this project right now as we speak. We're still working through Corps of Engineers permitting process right now for the portion that goes on top of the levy over by West Accony Road 7. But things are progressing. It'll probably take another month or two to, to finish things up with federal review. But we've been simultaneously, Eric Hansen's been working with this DOT, and we're in a good spot with the DOT for the work that's going to occur on 59. Be a proposed RFB at Main and A Street and a proposed trail extension on the east side of 59 between Boyer and Windstar, out in front of Aldi. So this cooperative agreement memorializes that relationship between the city and the DOT for the work in the DOT's right of way. It essentially says that the flashing beacon system is the city marshal's to maintain and own and operate and keep in compliance with ADA. And the trail portion done by Aldi is ours to maintain and operate as well, but the state is the ultimate owner of the trail. So kind of a standard MINDOT cooperative agreement, but we did send it to our city attorney to review as well. And she did, she did go through it and point out a few things, but I think it's in a good spot. Staff would recommend that we authorize the execution of this agreement, and we'll continue to bring the project to completion with permitting. And we'll come back to the council hopefully in the next month or two with seeking authorization to advertise for bids.
Okay. Questions for Jason? Is there a motion then to approve the cooperative construction agreement?
I move approval.
I'll second.
By Craig, seconded by Amanda. Discussion? The discussion item might be, the other step on this which will come forward will be the vacation of the, the current portion. That's going to be replaced by the new construction.
Yeah, you know, that'll be something that we'll work to bring forward in front of the council fairly soon as well, I suppose. Probably around the time of construction or when we're looking to bid. The trail just South Holanders Construction, which you're referring to, Mr. Mayor, West Accony Road 7, where the city of Marshall owns some property. We'll likely want to work with the council to convey that property over, possibly obtain some easement for access, things like that, to get to the levy property. But we'll, we'll work through council committee process and then bring something in the coming months.
And then PINT did start on that conversation also about vacating the, the current piece, so.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. The motion does pass. Agenda item number 22 was added to the agenda. This is the appointment to the Marshall Municipal Utilities Commission. Council met earlier this evening in special session, interviewed an applicant, and based on that special meeting, I would recommend that Chris Carroll be appointed to a, be reappointed to a term. She's completed her first term, so she would be appointed to a second term. And that term will expire May 31st, 2029. Offer that as a recommendation to the council and entertain a motion to affirm. Motion by John, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda item number 22, Commission Board Liaison Reports. Craig?
Airport Commission, I believe, met. I was not able to attend. I'm sure Jason will have an update of anything fresh on that.
We actually did not. We canceled, we canceled very close to the meeting date. We're working out a quorum.
That's right, yep. So, yeah, I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Steve?
I have nothing.
Amanda?
Planning Commission met last week and confirmed or approved of some finishes on a building down here on West Main Street, that some tile that's falling off a building currently. We'll have that taken down and replaced with something safer. The other two items from Planning Commission we addressed in the consent agenda earlier, the preliminary Platte for Lockwood Second Edition and same for Peachy Subdivision. And then Public Housing Commission met last night, talked about the 2022 capital funds projects are wrapped up, and they're starting to work on proposals for the 2023 project. We also received a housing grant from UCAP for improvements on the East Main property. And then we were also, we reviewed and approved, I didn't, but they did, the audit report for 2023. So busy night.
Very good.
That's it.
The Southwest Regional Development Commission had their monthly meeting this past Thursday. They also had their public hearing on their annual levy request that goes out to each government's body in the nine county area. There is no one showed up for that hearing though, so, so there was no input. John?
Nothing.
See?
DEI met, and we talked more about strategic plan, putting together a subgroup, just discussion on what's going on with Juneteenth, and then the library. I put a postcard on all your spots. This is their annual report for 2023, and you can get a copy of this when you go to the library. But it just tells you, it just gives you kind of a summary of everything that they're doing and what's happening. So it's kind of really neat to see that, wow, we, you know, the library does a lot. So pretty neat there. And then we did go over 2025 budget, and then I was not able to attend the CBB meeting.
And Jim?
Mine, I have nothing.
To council member individual, I'm just Craig. Let's start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to remind everybody or let people who don't realize, let them know that it's Law Enforcement Week. So, you know, I think we all understand with a lot of recent events how important our public safety and law enforcement are. And if you see an officer, firefighter, any of the, our public safety employees and volunteers, make sure you thank them. I think they're, I think we realize almost every day now the importance of having them. So I'm glad they're honored this week. Thank you. That's all I have. The weather's nicer. It leaves a lot of people out exercising, running, riding bikes. Be aware of them.
Amanda?
I've got nothing.
Jim?
I have nothing.
See? And John?
Just a reminder, property taxes are due tomorrow. I know, I'm excited.
Pay mine if you're really excited.
We'll move then to staff reports. Sharon?
Try to be really quick, but lots of work happening in the city and some dates to be aware of. The DEI strategic planning, we did get a date set, May 23rd. You're not on the subcommittee, I don't believe, right, See? So you don't have to worry about it. But just letting you know, we did get that set. And we're putting the final touches on our Juneteenth celebration, which was referenced a little bit by Cassie. We do have a food truck event that day and also an event at Justice Park. Really good collaboration with SMSU and some other community members. And we've gotten some donations too from Avera and Southwest Initiative Foundation. So that's been really nice to help, help offset some of the costs on that. Jason and I have been talking. Jason and I have been talking with Schwanz, I think I put this in my administrative brief, on their arrival/departure building lease agreement, as well as their hangar lease. They had a desire to extend that agreement, and we want to do that. Another really good partner for the city, so we're hoping to bring that back on May twenty-eighth. And you'll be seeing other agreements that come up at the airport later this year as well. Have not mentioned the Aquatic Center for some time, but they are working towards ninety percent design. And they hope to have a really thorough review with the committee again. I think it's tentatively the week of the fifteenth of July, and we'll get some dates locked in, because I know everybody's really busy in the summer. And then they're going to come to the council on July twenty-third to ask for requests to bid or advertise for bids. That's a tentative date on that. We're looking at having a ceremonial kind of groundbreaking on August twenty-third for the Aquatic Center onsite that on the Friday of sounds of summer. So more details coming about that. Two other really quick things, and then I have a request from the mayor to see if we can let EJ go over budgeting, because we're starting that too. But we are planning, staff had a discussion about political signage, and we know we're entering campaign season again. And there's state laws stating the window of when you can place political signs. But two years ago, we had a lot of wrong placements. There weren't place in the correct location. And so we're going to try to get ahead of it and do a little bit different internal process for complaints that we get. We're going to meet with Democrat and Republican chairs here end of May, hopefully early June. So that's going to be happening. And we did put out some Minnesota flags, the new Minnesota state flag, which to my knowledge, it was official on May eleventh. And we did not put them in every location. The problem is, is there not, is not a good supply. The quality of the flags are not what they need to be either. A lot of the flag manufacturers have kind of been waiting because of the, of the legislative debate, and they're extremely expensive. So we have done some. It's not on every single location. But we've put our best efforts on updating the Minnesota flag where we can. So I wanted council to be aware of that. Mr. Mayor, we do have a budgeting process and draft timeline, and I know that EJ wanted to cover a little bit of that. So if I could, I could yield some of my time to him and.
Sure. Before you do that, though, the, do you want to announce the Southwest-West Central groundbreaking on May twenty-ninth at five o'clock PM?
Yes, we did just get confirmation, if you remember, out by US Bank. Southwest-West Central is going to build, I think it's close to seventeen thousand feet office training center for, for their employees and for the surrounding region and their school districts that they serve. And that date has been set, so we'll probably put out a calendar appointment for you along with the groundbreaking for the Aquatic Center too. So.
Any questions for Sharon before she yields her time to EJ? I don't recall asking you for this, but, but, but go ahead.
I apologize. I meant to say that to you earlier, but I, I wasn't at the top of my game earlier today. So a little frazzled with different things, so.
Very good. Go ahead, EJ.
In a similar idea of getting things on calendars, I thought it'd be good to touch base on budget timeline. It's typical that we have our first real session is a work session, usually the, before the second meeting in July. So it's proposed to be July twenty-third, a work session with community organization requests, starting at four. The proposal then to go over the full budget would be the second meeting in August. At three PM, do a work session to go over all capital requests, the operating budget, and the preliminary tax-based changes all at that time. And then September tenth, if, if after the twenty-seventh, we think we're ready, we could come forward on the tenth of September to propose adoption of the preliminary budget. If, if council after the twenty-seventh would like, we could also do a work session after the regular council meeting on the tenth, and then delay the preliminary adoption until the twenty-fourth of September. Again, we just have to have it in before the thirtieth. First meeting of October, we usually have a, a council work session to go over the health and dental insurance, and then have that approved at the second meeting of that month. So that would, that would be a normal one. But we'd have a work session before the first meeting in October. We would have a work session after the council meeting, the second one of November. It's kind of an update on where we're at with proposed budgets and levy. And then we'll do something different. Last year, we had a special meeting for the Truth and Taxation Meeting. This year, since we've already moved our second meeting of December up a week, because it would follow otherwise on Christmas Eve, we proposed to do the Truth and Taxation Meeting at the regular council meeting on, on the tenth. And then we approve the final budgets and levy on the seventeenth or at our second meeting. So we have that week in between in case there's any public input that we would like, like time to address. So the, the ones in red are the, the biggest ones. Just wanted to see if anyone had thoughts. I know last year, there were some conflicts, I believe, for some of the August meeting. So I mean, we might, we might have done a special meeting. It was either last year, maybe it was the year before already. So just wanted to see if, if anyone knows of any conflicts, if you want to go back, Stephen, to August. Because that's going to be the big one where we kind of go over the initial budget requests for operating for capital, etc. It would be on August twenty-seventh at three PM.
Anyone see any issues?
Not this time. I have to run by my director.
I like how you're dropping them on city council evenings. That works very, I think it works well for me, and it's, because we're, I have those days slotted. I, I appreciate that. Thank you, staff, for working to do that. I appreciate that.
Okay, thanks, EJ.
Thank you.
Sharon, any more? Or Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. I can give a quick project update. South Whitney Street's been under construction for probably a week or so now. They're laying sanitary sewer main at this time, and they're probably approaching Marshall Street or getting close to it. So that's going, going pretty well. We expect the Mill and Overlay project to start pretty soon. Some locates have been called in by the concrete contractor to start doing ADA ramp work, some small amounts of curb replacement that we had in the contract. So we should start to see some movement on that project with concrete work. I would say possibly next week. The SRE Building of RNG Construction has started to do some site work for the SRE Building project. So that's good to see dirt moving there. We have that grant agreement executed that allows us to do site work while we wait for the rest of the grant to do the rest of the work. A reminder to the residents, the Minnesota Sixty-Eight Resurfacing Project, scheduled to start next Monday on the twentieth of May. That should conclude by June thirtieth and will be done under traffic with flagging. So expect delays on that project from Marshall to Minnioda. And the Addison Parking Lot is paved now and is currently kearing and needs to be sealed and striped. Weather and contractor timeline permitting, that could happen yet this week, and we could be looking at possibly opening on Saturday. I haven't heard today if there's been any changes to that schedule, but, so we'll see. I think that's the best-case scenario, but nonetheless, it should be opening fairly soon. So we appreciate RNG Construction and Hess Concrete working very quickly on that project. And I think it looks pretty nice. So that's all I've got.
Very good. Any questions for Jason? Okay, Pam?
Nothing for the good of the whole. Thank you.
Sounds, sounds good. So the council does have the remainder of the agenda items, which include the administrative briefs, the report on cash and investments, the minister and the planning commission, the listing of building permits, and the listing of upcoming meetings. So those are for the council to review and ask questions if you have any. Is there anything else to come forward at this meeting this evening? If not, is there a motion to adjourn? So move. By Craig, seconded by Amanda, to adjourn discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. The motion passes. We are adjourned.